It started. Item one on tonight's work session. Thank you all for being here, by the way. First item on tonight's work session will be a presentation. I don't see Rebecca. Is she? Oh, there you are. You've been over. Okay. Hey, Rebecca. Rebecca is the president and CEO of the Fairhope Point Clear Community Foundation and affiliate of the Community Foundation of South Alabama, and she is here to speak to us about the new city park at the Anna T. Jean School. Welcome, Rebecca.
Good afternoon. It's great to be with you. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you and share with you the progress that we've made over the last few years with the Fairhope Point Clear Community Foundation. Many of you may already know that this is an affiliate of the Community Foundation of South Alabama, which has been in existence for some time, but about in 17, January of 17, we created an affiliate here to serve this particular geographic area. One of the things that we've discovered is that it's always much more effective if we can deal with a smaller geographic area and with local people to do great local things for the local community. So we've had a great group advisory committee here that's been formed. We've raised over a million dollars for a community endowment fund, which is what we're trying to continue to grow for the benefit of the Fairhope Point Clear area to last in perpetuity. With an endowment, you don't spend the principal. You just do distributions on an annual basis. We've been looking for some time. We've been distributing grants over the last several years that we've been in existence, but we've been looking and eager to find a project that we could partner with the city, preferably with the city of Fairhope, to do something that was very tangible and for the benefit of the population here. And so we've been in conversation with the mayor for some time, and what we'd like to do is partner with you on a project that would be a community foundation, excuse me, what we're calling the Foundation Park, which is a 1.6 acre parcel, which is on the campus of the, near the, excuse me, I'm looking for it, the, yeah, the Anna T. Jean's school property on Twin Beach Road and Section Street. There's a 1.6 acre parcel, which is under your ownership, which we've been, would like to partner with. The beauty is that we want someone that owns the property, someone who will maintain the property, but we would be a funder to provide funding in connection, collaboration with you to create a park there with a splash pad, some benches, et cetera, there on that piece of property. The affiliate advisory committee has approved and would like to present to you a proposal that we would give you $100,000 through the course of this calendar year, $50,000 this summer, another $50,000 in November to begin the process of creating a park. We've laid out for you some specifics. We would like to hopefully come to some agreement on a memo of understanding, and then we would go ahead and move forward with the donation. Phase one, as I say, would be the first $100,000 to create the park, landscaping and fencing, some signage, and then we would have a second funding opportunity, which would be phase two, which would be an additional $400,000, and we would do some fundraising here in the community. We've already got some individuals who've indicated they would be interested in some other organizations, et cetera. So in the spring, we would give another $400,000 for the park. Our hope is that we'll officially open to the public by the summer of 2026, and then we would hope that perhaps in the future, there may be subsequent projects that we would continue to do. But this is an effort to launch something that we would think would be for the benefit of the community, in particular for that particular community area. So I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the memo that we've presented to you with any of the specifics, but we also have provided for you a particular map that shows the creation of the park and how it surrounds the Hope Community efforts that they've got, the other land that you're leasing to that particular nonprofit. Do you want to go over any more specifics, Councilman?
I have a quick question for you as I'm looking at this. Thank you, Rebecca. On the highlighted, the space that's in color, I guess I would take the green. Is that, is that the 1.6 acre parcel?
Yes.
And then all of that is within that?
Yes.
Okay. I wasn't sure if there was 1.6 in that upper left corner and this was all of it.
No, that, we just, and this is all subject to change. Obviously, this is just a rendering, but you can see that you would come in and that we would share that parking lot that comes in off of Section Street, and then you would have some restrooms, and you would have a splash pad, and then a playground with some swings, and then there's some beautiful area there with oak trees that's already present. It really would take sort of a minimal amount to create a park just by itself because it's so gorgeous. And then you have the, that other green area, Councilman, is left open maybe for trails or future projects, but right now we're focusing on the splash pad and the playground.
What is, what's required from the city right now? I mean, this is, this is not new. This is not, I mean, the mayor's have spoken to us, but where are we at in that process? Do we need a?
Well, so that's why I asked Rebecca to come tonight. So obviously, when we did the lease with Hope Community, we carved out that 1.6 acres, and we had had some initial conversation about partnering with the Community Foundation. Now they would like to do a memorandum of understanding, just so they can go out and start soliciting funds. Hope Community has on their website identified the parcel as, you know, a future park, compliments of, I think it says Community Foundation of South Alabama.
It does.
So this is just the first step in doing that memorandum of understanding, and then what we would do is sit down again. There are some responsibilities that are going to be in the city. Richard Johnson has kind of taken that, kind of put a dollar number, a dollar figure to some of that, so that we can look at that possibly in the new budget, and then start working with Rebecca and her team to kind of build a park.
Counsel, comments, questions? Would you like to ask Lisa and the mayor and attorney to draft up a memorandum of understanding? Easy sell, Rebecca.
Excellent. I should quit while I'm ahead. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
We're real excited about this partnership. It's a perfect project. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next item on the work session would be an update from FIF on the nest and the four classrooms that are on the old K-1 property with Radona Mosley, Director of Fairhope Educational and Enrichment Foundation.
Hello. How are you? Thank you for having us today. I did want to introduce the people that are with us today. Radona Mosley, our executive director. We have Celeste Rivenbark, who is our education and campus coordinator, and Andy Wilcoxen, who is our treasurer. So we just wanted to take a few minutes today and say thank you for all that you do for FIF. You guys are such a great partner with the city. We had a huge success with our golf tournament this year out at Quail Creek, so, and our pickleball tournament, which is always a success. I think some of you also played a little pickleball, so we thank you for that. We raised close to $63,000 for that event. So a huge success for FIF in helping us just continue to do what, to achieve our goals. So FIF will be celebrating 30 years in 2026, so we're looking at that, and that's a huge and exciting time for us. But our mission remains the same. FIF's mission is to promote and enrich educational opportunities for all Fairhope public school children. And we're doing that through raising funds to promote our educational opportunities through teacher grants. We gave over $20,000 to teachers this past year for classroom grants, as well as 31 classroom grants of $200 each at the end of the year, so that they can supply things in their classroom. Also, we're providing educational enrichment opportunities for our students. I'm sure your children, your family, whoever you may know, has been on a field trip to the Pelican's Nest, and it is in your blood if you've been there, and it's part of who you are growing up in Fairhope. So we continue to do that. I'm not sure if you're aware, but one of our staff, and our main educator staff, Casey Hartman, is an employee of Baldwin County Public Schools, so she is required to see 50% of our Fairhope students and then 50% Baldwin County students. So I guess 18 months, almost two years ago, we brought on an educator ourselves with FIF to be able to see all of the Fairhope students. As you know, we're growing, we're becoming for a lot more students, so we couldn't see all the Fairhope students, and that was important to FIF because we want all of our students at Fairhope to come to the Pelican's Nest and have that experience. So, but just to kind of look forward for our 2025, 2026 vision, we want to continue to be the hub for education in Fairhope and in our community with a focus on marine and environmental sciences, and continue to see all those students, as well as open it up to our secondary education with sixth through 12th grade, and that is also, our educator position is able to help us do that. We continue to provide funding for all five Fairhope schools through teacher grants and master plan grants, so we raise money to give it back to them, which is what we're here for. So, and then the other things for our vision for 2025, 2026 is to educate and also provide like a hands-on learning experience at the Pelican's Nest. And that's not only to our Fairhope students, but also to private schools, home schools, and this is also a way that we may be able to generate some more revenue that goes right back into our Fairhope schools. So that's something exciting we're able to do, adding an educator as well. And then expand our learning space on the Pelican's Nest campus by updating the K-1 center buildings. We were excited to celebrate our new neighbors, and we're of course going to be nosy neighbors with the K-1 center and are excited for them to get started on that. And so we are looking at starting our four buildings that we have on our campus. We have plans to create a secondary learning space out of one of the classrooms or one of the buildings currently, but with the other ones, we're hoping to create office space, also create a expo space where people can come in and look at things about Mobile Bay and learn about our community, pay a little money, and be able, that money be able to go back to our schools. And then just build meaningful partnerships with you guys, with our city, with our county, so that we can give the best experience and give more money back to our schools. So, and then lastly, we're excited to celebrate 30 years in 2026, so you will see a lot of things coming with that, a campaign honoring our past, present, and future of FIF. We invite all of you to attend our fall event on September 27 at the Pelican's Nest, and we can't wait to see where we go from here with FIF, and we appreciate so much your support. So, does anyone have any questions?
What was the date of that?
September 27.
What would that be?
It's our fall event. It's called Jubilee at the Pavilion, and we're able, now that we have our outdoor classroom, we're able to have it on our campus. So it's food, band, all that fun stuff, silent auction.
Now, this is this year, September?
Yeah, September 27.
And when is the anniversary?
It's 2026, so we're working on events and stuff for that, different campaigns.
And so another thing I thought was great was the Pelican's Nest experience for students in the seventh through 12th grade. Has that been done before?
It has not. So we've been very limited with just K through six. So in adding that educator position, almost two years ago, was that right, the last one? Almost two years ago? We're able to be able to, one, see all of our Fairhope students, and, two, work to provide that secondary education program, so.
Does Fairhope High School or any of the other Baldwin County high schools have any marine sciences courses or curriculum?
You might connect to that a little bit better than me. They do, and we've started partnering with them. So Fairhope High School students participated in the Alabama Species Initiative this year, the poster awareness contest, and then went with the Pelican's Nest to the Sea Lab. We went on a trawl, and they were able to meet the scientists. We also did a program with the Family and Consumer Sciences Group, where we, I went to their campus and brought some preserved crabs and shrimp to their campus, a broadcast net, we practiced outside in the lawn. The students who were really interested came on a field trip to the Pelican's Nest. The Pearl Restaurant came and demonstrated how to open oysters. We had oysters, and we headed down to the bay. So those collaborations have happened, and they're really exciting. We tried to get them to eat oysters at 8:30 in the morning. They were having it. Yeah. Anything else?
Excellent. Excellent. Questions, counsel? Really appreciate the update. That's great. A lot going on there.
Yes.
Been around a long time.
It has.
I've been a part of that for a long time myself, and I'm glad to see everything that's going on there. We really appreciate it.
Good. Well, thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right. Committee updates. Councilman Martin?
I have him.
Councilman Conyers? Councilman Robinson?
I have him. Making sure, making sure.
I know, yeah. I think, so we've, you know, first of the month, or well, end of the month, we're past the first couple of weeks, so we haven't had committee meetings in a while, but I will say that the Air Race Classic at the airport commenced last Tuesday. There were some weather delays, and I think some of them had to depart a little later than they had hoped, and, but anyway, the race directors, you know, pulled that off, and we had a dinner here, you know, on the Sunday night before the race. And for what, for those of you who don't know, the Air Race Classic is the oldest women's air race in the country, very prestigious. I think there were 41 teams, right, Mayor? 41 teams of all women pilots. They left Fairhope as their starting point, and they were to fly to Spokane, Washington, passing maybe seven or eight points along the way that they have to check in with. So it's really a big deal in the aviation world to have that, and we've been the terminus of that. But last week, we were the beginning of that race. So as far as I could tell, Mayor, they all had a good time, right?
They had a really good time, and just Pam Cordell and Dave Friedel from the, Friedel from the Airport Authority did a great job organizing that event and just making everybody feel welcome, so I really want to thank them. And they had over 150 volunteers working on that project, so I want to thank all of them because they, they're the ones that made it possible.
Thank you for that, yeah. Okay, I don't think I have any more updates. Any other comments before we get into department head updates, counsel? Okay, we go ahead and go into department head updates. If you have agenda items, if you'll please go ahead and cover those during your update, please.
I've got one item, number 12, is a, just a renewal. This is not new service, just a renewal on our Unity Fiber Services. Two services are being renewed, one from Quail Creek back to City Hall, and then the other one is a backup internet connection for the entire city, and then there's also a small charge just for port access.
Any surprises, Jeff?
No, no. The cost hasn't changed. All right. It's budgeted as well.
Any questions for Jeff?
All right, thank you.
We like no surprises. Thank you, Jeff.
Nothing on the agenda for the gas department, but I am going to introduce you to Ethan Carrigan. Ethan's our intern in the gas department for this summer. He's an incoming senior at Bay Shore Christian School, and I'm going to let him do the update from the gas department tonight, and so I'm gonna, I'm gonna get out of the way and let him talk to you.
Oh, great. Welcome, Ethan.
Thank you. All right, so update on projects is cast iron phase two. Pre-construction meeting took place today, 6:23. Groundbreaking for the phase two will begin August 13, affecting over 600 customers, and installation of over 950,000 feet of pipe, gas pipe. Highway 181 relocation. Construction should begin within the next two weeks on this line relocation. Then training safety meetings. Four of our employees completed an in-depth gas code review course last week in preparation for their gas fitters exams. Next monthly gas department safety meeting is scheduled for this Friday, the 27th. Any questions?
Awesome. Yeah, yeah, was that meeting at 6:22 or 6:23?
Uh, 6:23.
Okay, just checking, just checking.
I have a question about the cast iron phase two, about the budget part of that. Ethan, good to have you, buddy.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you for allowing that, Wes. That was great.
Good evening. Before I cover my agenda items, I do want to just give you at least a project update because we've, we've got so many mega park projects going on, we sometimes forget about the smaller one, but if you hadn't been down to White Avenue Park, that project is substantially complete. They got a few punch list items, but it really turned out nice. Thank you for funding. You know, we did all the design in-house. The project came in under budget and on schedule, and I really think it's enhancement to that small, little public access to White Avenue Pier, as well as providing some parking and do it in attractive and appealing manners. So if you hadn't been by, please go check it out, but sometimes we get real involved in the big park projects, and we forget about the small ones, but we appreciate your support on that. I have two related council agenda items, number six and seven. Number six is we're requesting you award the bid to Chris Brewer Contracting for the tap grant for new sidewalks on Blue Island and Fairwood Boulevard. And if you haven't noticed or done the math, we had for both these two items, a million-dollar budget, and we're under by about $185,000. And item seven is the engineering for the C E and I for this project. Both of these are an 80/20 tap grant, meaning that 20% of the cost is on us and 80% is reimbursable through the transportation alternative program. And we had six qualifying bids, and if you haven't done the math, the difference in bid one versus two was $378.35, which is a 0.054% difference in price. So I think we can say we have, have good numbers, and this is a project that we have been talking about forever. And just if you look at the note, that tap grant was awarded in '23, and here we are in '25, so it's nice to see it come to fruition, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I don't have any questions, but I just want to say thank you and to all of the people that bid and for all the work from staff that went into this, because as you, as you mentioned, this has been in the works for quite a long time, and a much-needed project, I think, that'll really enhance our city.
Good evening. I have agenda item number eight, which is the surpassing of the Marathon Gen X baler, where we are going to donate it to the new Baldwin County Murph to further support them in their endeavors. Pretty simple. It's been sitting in our warehouse for about five years. It's in excellent condition, so it'll be, it really will be a good attribute for them to start baling their cardboard. Just any questions or anything like that?
When will the, the local, I may have asked this recently, just for a refresh, when will the local collection spot for our recyclables be, be completed at, out by the courthouse?
July, we just sent y'all a calendar entry for that day. It's July 17.
July 17.
That's the opening of it? Or the groundbreaking of it?
That's the opening.
Oh, fantastic.
Yep.
You should have it in your inbox.
Questions for George? Anything else, George?
That's it.
Got it, man.
Evening, counsel.
Evening.
We have 10 and 11. They sort of, it looks like we're getting back money, but we're not. So Marcus and Aaron have been talking, so the 46 material we bid out, some of the items went over 10%, so we took those items out, resented them. We've taken those out, out of the POs that we wrote, but we got to put them out for quotes now, so it's going to end up costing us more money because things are not going down. That's, that's 10. It's pretty much everything that sums up 10. We've got to put all those items that went over 10% back out for, for just requests for quotes.
Can I, I want to stop you for just a minute, man, and just ask the attorney and the clerk, everything's good on the resolution? The language is up to date? I know this is, this was a little fluid. I just want to make sure that we're passing the absolute latest and greatest on this.
Right. We, you're not going over a threshold where you have to bid everything out because the overall project has not risen over 10%. This is one of those, Ben's coming back, counsel, telling you, hey, we're getting price creeps on our, on our numbers that we're getting on this project, so you don't get a surprise when it hits 10%, but we're, right now, there's certain aspects of it that were bid out, parts that were, you know, some scribbler's errors on some tabulations, but everything was done correctly. The bids were all done correctly. They were accepted correctly. We're just getting numbers, intermittent numbers, that are jumping up past what we're using as a 10% threshold. It's not a mandatory 10%, that's just where we're coming back to counsel, saying, hey, we need to put this back out for quotes, and then letting you know that we're spending more money than the original budget was, but we're still not, we're still with underneath that 10% threshold where you have to bid the entire project out again.
But I just want to make sure, the language is up to date. I mean, just, you know, there was, there was, I talked to Ben, and I know that there'd been some changes. So the, so the negative numbers are due to rescinding of those bids, right?
Right, yes. That's right.
Okay, and so I just, with a lot of things, you know, changing, I just want to make sure that what we have in our book was the, was the latest, that we were adopting the latest language, and that you had seen it, and you were good with all that.
Good with it, really.
So that's probably something that council president, we probably need to talk about as well, as far as how they're doing this, I think, listening to the, to legal. You know, right now, I think we're doing, I don't know where they're getting the 10%, but the 10% is not of the main, of the total project. And so they're having to come back, and we're actually losing money every time they have to come back if something goes over that 10% threshold that they're using, and it doesn't make sense business-wise if we're still under the threshold, under the usage of the money they have budgeted, but we have them kind of in a situation to where everything goes wrong with that 10% now that the time is money, you know?
Yeah, yeah, so, so that's kind of why I asked the question. It's, it's kind of alluding to what you're, you're mentioning, and I'll try to verbalize it, is that, you know, when I spoke to Ben earlier today, a lot of these quotes because of uncertainties in the markets, especially when it comes to metals, prices are changing, they're, they're all over the, they're all over the place, a constant threat of tariffs. I mean, you know, the tariff's 20% today, it's 50% tomorrow, and then it's, you know, gone. I mean, it just, the market's just, you know, just kind of all over the map right now. So is there any language in here now or that we could add that gives, as long as we don't violate the bid law, the 10% combined threshold that gives Ben or the mayor the authority to go ahead with the purchase if a quote comes back and it's different than the numbers that we're looking at today? Because what I'm being told is in two weeks, or, you know, it could, if they come back with a quote, it could be different than...
But that's my question, I guess, on a, on a bigger scale here, is if we approve a $5 million project and we vote in here and enter a resolution for that $5 million project, well, in that $5 million project, there are 75 different components of that project. So do they have to come back before us if the entire project goes over 10% increase or all 75 of those different components?
Just the aggregate. It would have to change by $500,000.
It's the aggregate where you have to go bid it out, but if you've only authorized an expenditure of $500,000 on something, you've still got to get approval for amounts spent over that. And that's what Ben's doing now, is just kind of coming in, letting you know, this is not what we bid out, this is what we're doing, and making sure we got approval to go ahead and do that. You can build it into some of your bids.
So, so if we had a, you know, we don't know what that quote's going to come back, but if we need to say, when we authorize expenditure where they not exceed amount of X, we could amend these resolutions so that you have a tool to purchase these items before the next council meeting, should something be funny with those quotes, and that's our concern.
That's, that's, that's the crux. That's the rate limiting factor that, where we are right now.
That's fine. The percentage numbers are different because one of them went up like 400%. So there's, you know, you never know what you're going to get. Is that, is that right?
The number didn't go up.
Forty, that was a quantity.
Quantity was incorrect. The quantitative, the measurements was wrong on that one.
Really? Some of them went up like 20%.
Some of them, they bid a doll, bid an amount, but then when we actually, timing of issuing that, they increased their price.
And say, but, so one of them, they increased each, what you like call widgets, $5.
I think that we need to, we need to, and Marcus in between now, when, when we get to this, I would like to add language, counsel. I would like to add language, and counsel agree me, if you will, if you like to, or disagree, to say that we authorize mayor and treasurer to expend funds, so as long as we don't exceed the 10% of the aggregate. And if you approve of that, in other words, if the quotes come back and they're just crazy, then you won't approve them, but we give you the authority to approve the expenditure. Exactly. So if you guys agree that that's a fair price, we need to add to this resolution the authority for you to go ahead and make the purchase.
Yeah, but we had to do this exercise to follow the bid law, because it was put out for bid, we awarded it, now they came back and they changed their price, so we have to come back to reject it, come back here.
Understand.
Now, now we can go out for quotes.
And I'm trying to get ahead of you on the quote. So when a quote comes in, if you three agree to it, and you don't violate any bid law, make the purchase before the price changes.
I think Ben has already gone back. We immediately went back in, we saw the discrepancies, and he's got quotes, ready to go. So they're, it's moving.
You already have the quotes?
We're getting some of them. I got to get at least three or no quotes, so that's, that's-
Yeah, so, but this doesn't go far enough to allow the awarding of that quote, and you know, so, and the next, when is our next meeting? It might be more than 14 days.
July 14th is the next meeting.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's almost three weeks. So we don't know what's going to happen. So I think, I would like to add language at the end of that resolution, it says, and authorize the mayor to make the award for quote, you know, as subject to bid law.
We looked at it from a standpoint, too, that, hey, if we had, if these numbers were correct, and what they are, we still underneath the next lowest bidder, or the next highest bidder, rather, and they were all still underneath what the next bidder had allowed. And again, it's one of those, once they do go up, whatever threshold you want to say, you just want to set it at, they could even go back to that other vendor and say, I need a quote on this, this, and this. However, you know, whatever works best, as long as we stick under that 10%.
Yeah, just write it so that we're following the law, and that they have the flexibility to award the quote if they feel it's, it's a good and valid quote. I mean, if it doesn't meet the law, then you can't do it. Just put that in there.
Yeah. And so do we have to do anything with the line items? Is that, can we rearrange that to where, does that help you guys, or not help, you know, that part, where it's-
That's where we get, where they-
I think that's where we get deemed.
As you line item everything out, they give you a price per, price per quantity, or price per widget.
Or whatever you want to do.
That's when we have to come back.
We did 10% of each line item instead of 10% of the total job.
But that's what we're saying. Can we kind of change that mechanism as well, and stay within the bid laws?
You can, you don't have to go back and bid, or re-get it. You don't have to bid it out until the total goes over the 10%. But what they're using as a threshold is if you have this quantity and widget item at a number, and it rises over 10%, they're now going back out for quotes at that 10%. You can set that at 20% or whatever, as long as our aggregate increase doesn't go above the 10% where we have to bid all of it out again, and authorize, and I mean, they're using 10% as just a, as a numerator kind of number, and it doesn't have to be that. It could be 20. Like I said, okay, well, it's, you know, 15, we're good with that, let's go. But that's-
Well, that's why I say, so as long as it follows the bid law, you know, one component might change by 200%, but the aggregate didn't change by 1%.
Right.
Right. It could be a dollar bolt, and you got 10 of them.
So we got about $20,000 we got to re-quote on those, because they went up about 50 cents per bolt.
And if that needs to be a separate resolution for those, then let's do that. But let's get it so that we can award the quote if it needs to be awarded prior to the next meeting.
And the problem is, the bidder put in this dollar amount, we awarded it, but then they came back and said, oh, there's an increase due to a tariff, and now the dollar is this amount. That's the reason we're having to come back, is the bidder changed who we awarded to-
Well, the manufacturer, manufacturer went up on them.
But that's not, but, so, is that, how does that work? Like, is that, I mean, that sounds kind of-
We've been through this before, too.
Yeah, that sounds kind of funny, you know, you can't-
No, everybody puts language in their contracts now, and Marcus did, yeah, to say that they have the ability to do that because of the tariffs. I mean, it's the biggest part of it right now.
Tariff exclusions, like a force majeure in a contract. If we get hit with tariff costs or other things, and that's passed on to the customer.
By the time we, by the time we bid it out, got it on the council, got a green sheet approved, the vendors went line item by line item, by that time, in those two, two to three weeks, it shot up that much on those certain items. So that, that's, that was the biggest thing.
Let's move on so that we can have some time to massage that resolution before we get to it, so.
Any questions on that?
Uh, no. Were those the only two items you had?
I'll speak to nine.
Number nine, did you say?
Yes, sir. So this is for our big, big boar rig. It's probably at 15 years old, and it has the same rods. So we have, we have a job coming up, and Water and Sewer has a job, but just those two jobs, we're, we're just going to be around 18 grand. So we're asking to get 500 feet of new boar rods. That way, we can do those in-house and take, and save.
It's a non-budgeted item.
Yeah, and it's a non-budgeted item. So Kim, I've got with Kim, and she took out all four utilities. It's actually, it's actually Water and Sewer, but we, we've got the first boar coming up. And I'd rather come up here and ask y'all for material that we can use than come up here and ask you $9,000 for a boar that added in budget.
I have no problem with it.
Mike, you have any problem with that?
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
Yeah, appreciate you.
Good evening. Recreation has several on the agenda tonight. Number 13, regarding the irrigation system at Quail Creek. This is for a subscription service for Toro. This is how the irrigation system is communicated across the course. And basically, this system, it's a three-year subscription, $336 a month, which is $4,200 a year, provides warranties for anything that may go wrong with the system, three years of NSN support and service, smart tower, and all the tools that go with it to help our irrigation system work correctly, which is a little bit critical to us at this point, since we have nine new greens. Any questions about that?
That's a budgeted item, isn't it?
Sir?
It's a budgeted item, right. And that's the $10,392, which is for 36 months, right?
Correct.
Yep. Okay, thanks.
Number 14, we're going back on this bid. The Shade America was the winning bidder. They did not have all the proper licenses to perform the job, so we're asking to rescind that and go to the next highest bidder, or lowest bidder, which would be Great Southern Recreation, with about a $50,000 increase, but we're still under budget.
It's still a huge increase, though. I mean, they couldn't get their paperwork in order. They couldn't get their license-
They did not, they did not have a general contractor's license in the state of Alabama, and apparently could not produce one.
And they couldn't, they couldn't get one, huh?
That's what I was told.
I mean, that's a, you know, you say it's only 50,000, it's under budget, but it's, it's $50,000 more than one, it's, it's, it's a 35% increase.
Mm-hmm.
So, so we couldn't give them an extension to get their license?
I can't answer that question. I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how hard it was to get a general contractor's license. But I mean, we, it's been, it's been a while.
Months?
It's been a while since we awarded the bid.
Okay. I mean, that's just a question. I'm not, I mean, that's why-
I mean, I can certainly ask, but I can't answer that. I don't know.
I mean, because I-
City could do it.
I'd rather-
And harm is a sub.
Right.
Somebody work under their license.
Our license? We don't have to have a license.
Well, the issue was, and obviously I worked with Aaron, that the problem is, is that when you, and it did change to 100,000, but if you, if you bid on work greater than 100,000, you have to have a GC license in the state of Alabama. They wanted to use a sub, and the request of them was that we needed an opinion from the GC board if that is appropriate, and apparently, they could not get that opinion from the board. And we said, well, then, we gave them, I think, we opened the bid how long ago? 60 days? Or longer, asked them to get a reciprocal license, because they did hold, I think, a Florida GC's license.
Correct.
And they refused. And so we gave them over two months to try to resolve this, and, you know, we can't, we can't award it to them if they don't hold-
You gave them 60 days. That's it. That's, that's a lot of time. Yeah, yeah. Thank you. All right. Much as I hate to say it, but yeah, I think we just move on with this then. What do you guys think?
I hate to say I'm excited about getting those shades, though.
Yeah, man.
I mean, I'm really, I really want those shades.
All right.
It's a project we've been working on for a long time.
Yes.
I mean, we tried to do it ourselves in-house. Then we went, you know, to a company like this, but they were so expensive, we were trying to be more frugal. Then we thought we were getting a good deal, so we've been kicking the can down the road on these shades.
Yeah, these are, these are necessary for certain.
Oh, yeah, no doubt.
Lastly, number 16, in regards to the Fairhope Swim Team's proposal that was unanimously passed by the REC Board. They will be paying a full rate. They're not, not requesting any special rate to rent the pool. They are requesting four lanes in the evening hours, pretty much year-round. And my staff thinks we can make this work for the most part, but we would like to be able to monitor this, to see if we are getting negative feedback from our membership, if, if we can, you know, ask them to reduce the amount of lanes or hours that they're using the pool. Because we just have to be, we have to find that balance. We have to, we have to keep our members happy. They, they want to be able to get in, in the pool and use it, and we have a lot of teams using our pool now. So we just got to find that balance between the two.
I do want to say one thing, not to, not to correct you, Pat, but to correct you here, is that there was some opposition on the REC Board. There was one, one vote of opposition against that.
You're correct. Yes, thank you for that.
I thought so. And that, that was, that was understandable. That person's pretty consistent on, on, you know, letting a lot of organizations outside of the REC Department use our facilities, and not just the pool. And I understand that.
You're right.
I like, I like the fact that there's some pushback. It keeps it balanced.
Yeah. And this is, to be honest, a tough one for us.
It's a tough one. Well, you know, it always says, subject to your review and approval as well.
Right.
I know that you thought long and hard about it.
Is this the one where there'd be after-hours?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what kind of gets my attention, that part.
Well, we, the staff will still be there. They're there until 8 o'clock at night, so they're, they're on duty. That's typically the time that they're doing the, the cleaning of the facility.
And so that you say that, that's my point. Like, that's the time that they're actually on duty, but they have a duty. Now you're putting another duty underneath that, so that's even more time, you know, just to make sure that our fees are paying for all of that, that we're charging them, because that's going to increase, right?
Don't we have a private school paying extra, too, for those, that staff that's there? I mean, they're, they're not the only ones who are there after-hours.
Correct. We had two private schools use the pool last year until the 8 o'clock hour.
Okay. Almost, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. We've got a couple of appointments, one to the Fairhope Airport Authority, one to the Personnel Board. We've got an application for a restaurant liquor license. I'm sure that's been vetted. And then lastly, Mayor, if you want to touch on item 15, which is the resolution to suspend the lease payments for the Blind Tiger for July and August. You got something?
No, I just wanted to introduce our appointment to the Personnel Board. Stephanie Sandifer, I think, y'all might be familiar with her. She's with-
Think I might know her.
Fairhope Realty Group. So we've introduced her to a couple of board members, spent some time with her, and excited to have her up to meet with y'all this afternoon. So.
Well, I'm going to give her, I'm going to give her a shameless plug here. Stephanie is, I'm sure is a fantastic Realtor, but she's also going to do a great job on the Personnel Board. But I also know her as, as an accomplished artist, and I have a house full of her original art. So Stephanie, thank you so much for serving the city. You did a wonderful job.
Thank y'all.
You want to talk to us now about the lease suspension of the lease payments? While you're coming up, I'm going to go ahead and ask you. So when we return to the agreed-upon amounts September 1, will that be the lease payments in full? You know, we were, we had reduced it by 50% for a time.
Right.
And so this would return to-
The full, the full percentage. That's correct.
Of any size.
So what we are entertaining tonight, or what the council's entertaining, is to do a temporary suspension of lease payments for the term of July and August for the Blind Tiger. We have been, we have cut their rent now by 50%. It's at 1.5% versus 3%. And I will tell you that we, we went back and double-checked some of that. They have been paying the full rate, so they do have a credit on their account right now, just so y'all are aware of that. But we will, we will temporarily suspend the lease payments for July and August because of the inconvenience that we have caused them with the work down at the waterfront. I do feel like we've been good communicators. We have, they were aware of this project before it started, but I do feel like this is fair, giving them the months of July and August, knowing that they're going to get the full benefit of the park being open in the next several weeks, and they'll have all the parking they need, and hopefully, we'll do a great job. And we're happy to have them there and want them to be successful, so this is just us contributing to that.
Questions about that?
Thank you.
No, but, but Mayor, I just, you know, for those that are watching, or those that are here, I just, you know, if you go down the social media rabbit hole, it kind of gives the impression that this was all kind of, kind of sudden and a surprise to everybody involved. And that's just not, I don't think that's, it's unfortunate that anybody's business is interrupted by progress in the city. But, but can you just explain, you know, that this has been something that was planned and advertised far ahead of when we're doing it right now?
Sure. I mean, obviously, all of you know, when we, when we leased that building to the folks of the Blind Tiger, there was a lot of conversation at that time about the waterfront project and the impact that it could have. And then, they didn't start their work for, you know, probably 18 months or so, and then, low and behold, both of the projects started at this, they opened the restaurant, and we started the waterfront renovations at the same time, which was unfortunate. We have done the best we can with the magnitude of that project, to make sure we're communicating well, to make sure they have adequate parking, to make sure that we have limited the closures as much as we can. This last closure that we had, it had to be done because of the curbing, and the road cut, and drainage, and everything that we were, we were finishing up. We do think this is, this was the last major closure that we'll have. We do hope, again, to open the circle for parking in the next couple weeks. There will be some temporary closures, just portions of it for striping. But we are, I mean, between Richard Johnson, George Ladd, myself, you know, we are spending a whole lot of time down there, micromanaging this project, making sure that we're being, you know, good neighbors with the Blind Tiger, to make sure we can keep them as successful as possible, make sure we can keep that area open. The contractor's been fantastic. Everybody's been working very diligently. And so for folks, I know if you go down the social media rabbit hole, to really blame the city for everything, this project has been on the books for a long time. It was communicated, and I feel like we're being good neighbors.
We've also offered the downtown parking shuttle to shut it.
We have. We have. We've done-
It hasn't been closed. It hasn't been closed. It's been open, although we would all admit, by this resolution, that it's been a detriment to business.
Yes.
But we have, but we have tried to do everything we can to assist them with the shuttle, and saying we'll take them, customers and clients.
And I will say-
A lot, a lot of things that go unsaid on social media.
Yes. And we have had, I mean, our staff here has taken phone calls, texts, you name it, all hours of the night, on the weekends, I mean, doing everything we can, you know, jumping when they call us to make sure that we're, again, being good neighbors and doing things we need to do to make sure they're successful. But, you know, just to blame the city is not really fair, because this project was communicated on the front end. Thank you.
Okay. I think that we will take a break. Let's come back at 5:30. We do have a, an oath of office. We have a resolution of appointment of the judge. We will withhold that item until 6 o'clock. So we will probably get through the majority of the agenda prior to that, but we will, we will stop when they get here at 6:00.
Counsel President.
And we'll go back to, to item number two. And we may, Mayor, if you want to hold off on your report, we'll have public participation, though, prior, and we'll give people ample time to speak at the conclusion as well. So let's go ahead and, Counsel, Lisa, Clerk, if you need-
I was just going to say that the judge and, and the other judge who's going to swear he may or may not be here, they're supposed to be here- here, Mayor, will be here. They're supposed to be here at five-thirty.
Okay. Well, when we come back, if they're here, we'll 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 go ahead with that. If they're not here, we'll just postpone until they get here. Okay, great. Thank you. All right. All right. Since Kevin's here, we're going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you. Yeah.